Coming today, it's our, sorry. It's our request for cancellation of taxes. It's January eighth, 2025. The time is 11:01 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Brooks and Duncan. Commissioner Retary is out of town. Are there changes to the agenda? Okay, introductions. So we have assessor staff and we have treasurer staff and Board of County Commissioner staff, and they each have a different role on our different agenda items. So if there's anyone here and on the phone who's going to be giving public testimony to the board today, the clerk is going to administer the oath.
Please raise your right hands.
And so anybody in the audience who's gonna-
Anybody who's gonna be speaking.
Yeah.
And the lady on the telephone, too. Do you solemnly swear that the evidence you shall give in the issue pending before the Cootney County Board of Commissioners shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Yeah, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do.
Great. And then I'm gonna go ahead and dispense with public comment until the end, because typically in this type of meeting, there isn't public comment when we call on folks individually to speak. So with that, item number, item number one, request for adjustment, reflect circuit breaker, and a party of deming. Are the demings here? Okay, so if you wanted to just come up to a table, or you can even bring the microphone back to her. Okay, sure. So go ahead and sit, have a seat. There's a microphone there. We have in our documents, but if you just wanted to briefly just state what happened.
A year and a half ago, I fell. So when the tax reduction forms came out, I totally wasn't with the program. I was under doctor scare. I had P T and pills, and that brought me to la la land.
Okay.
And I totally, it was my mistake, but I just didn't get it at that particular time.
Sure. Okay, did you have any questions, Bill? Okay, did you want to make the motion, or do you want me to make-
Go ahead.
Okay. So for AIN three, three, nine, six, I'm sorry, three, three, nine, six, nine, six, for party of deming, the circuit breaker amount is $800, the solid waste fee would be $44, and we're waiving penalties and interest.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Well, thank you so much. You have made-
All right, item two, request for adjustment to reflect circuit breaker, and I believe this is Renneker? Is party of Renneker here?
Yes.
Oh, on the phone? Okay. All right, so same as before, we do have your information in our, our packet, but if you just wanted to briefly explain what happened.
Okay, I have lived in my trailer for 20 years, and I always do the circuit breaker every year. But my memory's been getting pretty bad, and I thought I'd already filed it, because I do it every single year. But this year, I thought I'd filed it. I didn't know if I forgot or what, but I always file it every year.
Okay, and then have you filed it for twenty, have you filed it for 2025 yet?
I'm going to go in this week, because I have to pay the second, my second check of, what are the half payments? Because you got, you're supposed to pay half now and half in June, and I couldn't even afford to pay the whole thing, the first payment. So I'm gonna be in there this week.
Okay, any questions, Bill?
It's just that my, you know, my, oh.
Yeah, I think we're, we're good, ma'am. So we'll, I believe this is a situation that's fine. So I move that we, for party of Renneker, reduce the amount. The circuit breaker amount is $1,020, and the solid waste fee is $44, waiving penalties and interest, and the AINs are one, four, one, nine, one, eight, one, six, five, three, eight, two.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye.
Could I actually recommend, instead of coming in this week, you come in towards the end of next week? Because by the end of next week, we should have the cancellation completed, and we can give you your actual bill, instead of you paying based on what's due right now without the reduction.
Okay, like Thursday or Friday?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, can I, can I say, just say, excuse me?
If you have a question, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I just want to let you know that, you know, my trailer is just so old, you know, and I can't move it. It has to be torn down. And the land that it's on, it just holds up the trailer. So I didn't know it's worth so much. But anyway, that's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you so much, and you guys have a good, good day.
You too, enjoy.
And happy retirement, Mr. Brooks.
Oh, thank you, and be careful you don't fall out there.
Oh, you too. Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you. Guys, have a good day. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, item three, request for adjustment to reflect circuit breaker for Flickinger?
Yes.
Okay, and again, we have your information on file, but if you would like to tell us what happened?
Okay, I'm new to the area. I moved here from Florida in 2022. And at the time that I purchased my home, the realtor was very, very helpful. He gave me a list of this new procedure about the circuit breaker, which I wasn't aware of. And he listed it out, and I did everything perfect the first year. So I get everything ready the first of the year, and I called him and talked to him. And he, I asked him about it, and he checked his records, and he's been doing this for a number of years. And he said that, no, everything was all set. I didn't need to do this. So I said, okay, so in that he's been doing it, and he was so helpful the year before, I took him at his word, and I didn't do the circuit breaker. So I guess it was just a misunderstanding, and I didn't know the way things were done here since I had come from Florida. So it was my fault. But I'm a widow, and I'm on a fixed income, and now I have a problem.
Sure, sure. I just have a question for the assessor's office. Is there a mass mailing that goes out to the people who are on the program?
And we have taken the list of both December and January, the individuals that did not apply, and we have resent another application for 2025 out in the mail.
Okay.
They should receive it any day.
Okay, all right. And so Ms. Flickinger, you'll be filling out the paperwork this year for '25, correct?
Yes, and I already went by and went down there and gave them all my paperwork, which you have received, and I've already made the payment for the half.
Perfect, perfect. All right, thank you so much. Bill, any thoughts on this?
No.
Okay. All right, then, I move that for AIN two, five, five, four, two, seven, that we approve the circuit breaker amount of $1,290, solid waste $44, and waive penalties and interest.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right, item four, this is a request for adjustment, homeowner's exemption for AIN one, three, four, nine, three, nine, party of Savage, and party of Savage here? Oh, okay.
Okay, so just a quick, brief story that I guess is, after I lost my husband, I was gonna start a business. I made an LLC, and didn't realize that in doing so, it changed the homeowner's tax exempt and the HRT that was coming. And I didn't realize that until months down the road. I did file the paperwork that they told me would be in arrears. I did file it in January, but I'm hoping that maybe I could get the difference for homeowner's tax credit for those months prior that I missed because of this. I have always lived at this location. I never started the business at the location, but that's what happened. Just an error on my part, and I didn't realize that till much later.
And so have you, are you completely paid in full on your taxes right now?
Yes.
Okay.
The house was in the, well, what was her husband, and it was, he was sole owner at the time. So it never got changed, because it was never changed through them. So that is why, just to explain. And then once he had passed in 2019, it wasn't till 2021 that she changed it over to a business, and there was no way, that is, when you change the deed, and we have no way to know that. So you would have to reapply.
Right.
So she did receive for the rest of 19, 20, and 21, when the individual was not living in the home.
Okay.
So, just to make that clear, because-
Right. So I think for me at this point, for '23, I think I can, I can get there. But for '22, I probably would ask that you go through the hardship process, because typically, and again, to the assessor's point, you had received that without filing for it for three years. And then we usually can only make the determination if it was a mistake on the county's part or if it was, if it's a hardship. And I don't have the information in here that, that proves it's a hardship. So what is your thoughts on this, Bill?
I agree with you. It's always nice to do, quote, the right thing, but sometimes the circumstances and county ordinances.
Right. So if that is a process that you would like to go through, then you would be able to petition the board for the 2022. But at this point, I think the '23, especially because the taxes are paid in full already, that we don't have any information to make a hardship determination. So at this case, if we do the '23 exemption, would your office just credit what's been paid towards '24's payments, the June payment? Okay, all right. Is there anything else that I'm missing for that? Dave, does that sound good?
And does that include the, the new Idaho state, the home reduction or the HRT?
The HTR, they give us, they, they, HTR, you have to have already, the homeowner's exemption has to be applied for prior to, what's the deadline? Is it June?
It's like July.
July second?
Yeah, July tenth or seventh or something like that.
Yeah, so this, because the state gives us that money, and because you didn't have the exemption, the state didn't give us that money, and so we can't, we can't give it to you.
So it would only be applied to 2024?
If you applied in-
In January '24?
Yeah.
I get it that. Okay, I understand.
Yeah, so I move that we grant the request for the 2023 homeowner's exemption for AIN one, three, four, nine, three, nine, party of Savage.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. So, and then she's talking-
Can we confirm that the exemption amount would be $125,000? Would be exemption, the homeowner's exemption would be $125,000?
I can answer that. The value? Yeah, the values. Okay, all right. Item five, request for adjustment, reflect circuit breaker, party of Hummel. Go ahead.
I basically just had health issues, and I just missed it. So I knew about the application and all that, and then I got sick.
Okay, and have you filed for 2025 yet?
I need my 1099, so that will, that will come from Social Security. They said in, this month of February, and then I'm gonna do it.
Okay, so you've never had PTR in the past?
I, I never had and never knew anything about it. So I found out about it right before the deadline.
Okay.
And then I, I got sick. So, but I was, I was like, I couldn't believe that it existed.
Right.
Because you see what I make? That's basically my income, so.
Right.
And it's, and it's been a struggle. Went to divorce, I lost everything, and-
Okay, so I don't actually have a lot of background information. So I guess I'll, I'll check with the assessor's office. Since he's not qualified, he's not gone through the process before, would you recommend that you look at his '25 application?
We went back and looked at, we had him get, and he did go down to Social Security and get his 1099 for the prior year, and he did what we asked him to do. And so we did do a mock up, so we've already, the figures are correct for what it would have been if he would have applied that year.
Okay, so you're comfortable because he would have applied?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. Questions? Okay, I move for AIN one, oh, four, three, zero, one, a party of Hummel, that the circuit breaker amount of $1,500 and solid waste of $44, waiving penalties and interest, be approved.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Excuse me. Go ahead.
What is my payment gonna be, my taxes?
So we'll, I'll have the treasurer connect with you. They, they'll know that.
Before I leave, or?
Yes.
Or should I?
We won't know what the amount is before you leave, unless Kelly can take a quick look. But we'll have it by next week, for sure.
Okay. Will you send me a letter or something?
See if it's an easy button, except it's fifteen, yeah. Yeah, we'll send you a new statement. Yeah, so it looks like he's going, after adjustments, it looks like it's gonna be $416.59, but we'll send you a new statement.
Okay, I'll pay it, then next week, whenever I get the statement.
Yep. And if you don't get a statement, we've had some issues with the mail, as some of you have heard. If you don't get the statement within like two weeks, would you call our office, please?
Assessors?
Treasurers.
Treasurers.
Treasurers, okay, okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right, now on to our casualty loss. This is a request for adjustment, party of Brereton. And Ms. Brereton, are you on the line? Anyone on the line for the casualty loss? Kelly Brereton? We do have the information in our packet. That was prepared by staff, and the assessor, I think, looked at it as well for the casualty loss. Okay, all right. Bill, any questions on this? I believe it was flooding, and that it ended up-
Yeah, no.
Destroying the-
No questions.
The home, so. Okay, for this one, I move that we reduce the property value by $509,290 for 2024.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. Okay, items seven through one, oh, nine, I believe we can handle together, because these are homeowner's exemption due to House Bill 562 and assessor's office.
Yep, these are all due to the House bill. People applied for the exemption that we're applying it.
Okay, questions, Bill?
No.
All right. Then I move that we approve the homeowner's exemptions for items seven through one, oh, nine.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right, now I got a lot of scrolling to do here. To the next thing. So item one, ten, and this is homeowner's exemption. This, the entry was missed for party of Mormon, and-
Yes, this is a, this is a mobile home. Their homeowner's exemption was filed in 2022, and, but wasn't entered into the system correctly, and so we'd like to go back to '23 and '24 and give them the correct discount for those years.
Okay, so I think the motion can just be simple, apply the homeowner's exemption to those years? Okay.
Could you, is it gonna be $125,000 for each? So could you include the amount of the homeowner's exemption for those two years?
Just always making it complicated, aren't you?
Sorry.
Oh, okay, so can I, can I just put the amended value on the record that we go from to, or?
That works also, yeah.
Okay, let's do that then. All right, so for item one, ten, AIN two, oh, five, 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 one, I move that we approve the homeowner's exemption for twenty, the year 2023, original value $94,020, to the amended value $47,104. And for tax year 2024, the original value $71,684 to, reduced to $35,842.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right, item one, eleven?
Yes, this is a homeowner's exemption was stopped where it shouldn't have been. So we're just going to apply the homeowner's exemption to 2024, and then it'll be applied for 2025.
And this is one, twenty-five. Okay, questions, Bill? All right, I move that we approve the homeowner's exemption for AIN one, four, two, six, eight, seven, party of Hill.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. Item one, twelve, home, timber exemption for AIN one, nine, seven, five, eight, nine, Morningstar Family Trust.
Yes, this is a timber exemption, so they filed correctly back in 2022, but the exemption wasn't applied fully correctly. So there is an adjustment down, starting in 2022, of about $100,000 on their property.
Okay, and then do we need to notify the clerk about this one?
Yeah, I think this goes back far enough.
Okay. All right, questions? I move that we approve the timber exemption adjustment for AIN one, nine, seven, five, eight, nine, for tax years 22, 23, and 24.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right, item one, thirteen, this is evaluation adjustment for AIN three, zero, zero, two, eight, one, alternate, alternative molding concepts.
Yes, so this year, we performed an audit for our personal property as we were going back and, and looking through everything. The previous appraiser had some issues with their math, so we went back and did a full audit of everybody. So the next, quite a few changes are edits to the business personal property amounts to correctly reflect exemptions and follow the business personal property statutes.
Okay, is it through one, twenty?
I think so. It goes through, it's all of spectrum and steel, and I believe it ends at one, thirty-four.
Oh, okay, okay.
One what?
One, thirty-four is something separate. So, well, including one, thirty-four, through one, thirty-six?
One, thirty-four is a different, did you miss, does that-
Well, so what I was gonna do is I was gonna break down the personal property valuations, but I was gonna do spectrum by themselves, because there's so many. And the other ones, even though they're different parties, it's all the same reason. So are you okay with one motion, or are you one-
Well, it appears that it's all outlined, all the adjustments outlined in the packets.
Yes.
But I think you can just refer to item numbers and then the corrections as outlined in the packet.
Okay, okay. So with-
Does that sound like, does it?
Yeah, yeah, I believe so. It's gonna be the exact same reasoning. It's all the same audit and, you know, reflecting the correct exemptions.
So one, thirteen through what number?
I believe it's gonna be one, thirty-six, actually.
Yes, that's what I, that's what I thought. Okay, are you all right with that, Bill? Okay, then I move that we approve items one, thirteen through one, thirty-six, which are valuation adjustments to personal property due to the audit.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. Okay, well, Dyson, this isn't as long as you thought it was gonna be.
I'll stop for a second.
Yeah. So my guess, too, would we, we could handle one, thirty-seven through one, forty together as well?
Yes, I believe so. These are reductions to the solid waste amount due to PTR.
Okay. All right, questions, Bill?
No.
All right, I move that we approve items one, thirty-seven through one, forty, which are solid waste fee adjustments due to PTR.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right, do you wanna handle one, forty-one and one, forty-two together?
Yes.
Okay, so this is for property sold or transferred, and it has to do with the Idaho Transportation Department, and there's two separate AINs. Go ahead.
Yeah, so there were some name changes that were effective for back in 2022. And so we're getting caught up on the Idaho Transportation Department and working with them to have a consistent naming convention. With their small details, it's hard to catch them in an audit, because they'll change a T or capitalize something differently. So I'm working on that to make sure we catch all of these, but we do need to correct these as the, they are exempt parcels.
Okay, and we probably need to let the clerk know because of the high value amount?
Yes.
Okay. All right, questions, Bill? I move that we approve items one, forty-one and one, forty-two, which are AIN two, three, one, zero, five, nine, and one, oh, eight, one, two, six, for the Idaho Transportation Department.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right, item one, forty-three, this is an inactive or duplicate case, and it's AIN three, four, nine, nine, four, six. Safran is the party. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, this is kind of an interesting one. So float homes have a problem. They float and can move. And so sometimes they move to a different parcel, and we count them twice. So that's what happened in this instance.
Okay, questions? I move that we approve the removal, I guess, of the duplicate of AIN three, four, nine, nine, four, six.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right, down to our, our last one. Item one, forty-four is evaluation adjustment, adjustment for AIN one, six, four, five, six, six, Sabtuski, Sab, Sabpatski? Okay, sorry, I butchered that one. All right.
Our, our appraiser went out and looked at this and had some evidence that it wasn't, it wasn't worth anything besides salvage going back to 2022, so we'd like to go back and reflect the value to 2022 of just a thousand-dollar placeholder value, and then it's being deactivated for 2025.
Okay, questions? Okay. I move that we approve the valuation adjustment for tax years 22 through 24 for AIN one, six, four, five, six, six.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. Okay, now I will call for public comment. Did you have a question, Kelly?
Um, just so you guys are aware, Kelly, with the treasurer's office, we just wanted to make sure that the board was aware. I know you guys do know about the, the delivery issues that we had with the tax bills. With the letters that did go out, there may be some delay in those as well. We don't know, but we just wanted to make sure the board was aware.
Sure, thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody on the phone or online? Bill, dear, maybe?
Yes. This is Bishop Flickinger.
Yes.
I just had a question on my case. I didn't quite understand what was decided.
Your request was approved, and so you will get a new notice-
Okay.
-from the treasurer's office. If you don't get the notice within two weeks, then please reach out to them.
And thank you very much for your time and consideration.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, dear, need to do a public comment. He will be missed.
Thank you.
I missed his party yesterday.
All right. 11:20, yes?
With this AIN, I have this 338696. I just wanted to make sure that-
Oh, I have 339696.
No.
So we'll, we'll figure that one out. Yeah.
I forgot about that.
It could be a typo on my, on my list. Yeah. Okay. 11:30, meeting adjourned.